If you need to notify me of being on the agenda or anything that you may need, please feel free to call so we can continue to move forward in the council. At this time, to the citizens' request, Mr. Clay Thompson, so welcome to here.
Hello, how are y'all? As y'all know, or may know, may not know, we have Joan Baez coming in spring 2019. She is a world-renowned folk musician and civil rights activist and requested that she to play in Selma. I contacted Black Belt Benefit Group about doing this show and we've been working on this since last summer. I penciled in a date at the Walt Disney Theater. As soon as they contacted us to make sure we could hold that date, and so they said the date was open, we penciled it in, we proceeded to confirm and book Ms. Baez. And now that, once we confirmed her, we went back to go sign a contract and we were told that we were not allowed to sign a contract. And so we're really getting a contract on that because that's a pretty important show for Selma and a lot of the community will be there and be involved. And she's gonna, she's chosen to open her last tour of her career in Selma at the Walt Disney Theater. So I'm not sure which direction to go. I've contacted the mayor's office. Ms. Terry said her hand is tied there and I figured since the council was in charge of public buildings that I needed to go to y'all.
What date is that again?
April the ninth. We're actually doing, we'll have the theater two days, April eighth and ninth.
Eightth and ninth?
Yes, and we are not asking to waive any fees or anything like that. We plan on paying everything and we'll pay, you know, any extra if there's any extra labor that needs to be hired or cleaning these, anything like that, we're willing to do that.
How soon do you get the contract?
You know, as soon as possible. We just, we feel comfortable having a written contract.
Okay. Councilman Thompson, I know you chair the Public Buildings Committee now. Could you expedite that as soon as possible? Like I stated before, we all know with public buildings, if there's any way that we have to go without support, thank you, sir, thank you, councilman. Councilman Thompson?
Isn't it semi proud?
We've got four tickets left.
Four tickets left. Well, I'll tell you one. Dr. Yonblad, nine o'clock, two very expensive tickets. So we intend to be there and see the show. So we, I believe it's Yonblad, we'll have that many rubbers for their walkway. They're contracted out.
What was the reason? They didn't get their contract?
They said they weren't signing any contracts for 2019.
And just make sure people know, she was a leader in the civil rights movement. She, I guess she'd gotten an award or some award during the civil rights movement.
Yeah, we're working on presenting her with an award. Walsh is here as well. It's still stuff we work on.
Is there any other questions? Any other questions? Call there, go right there, we'll handle all the answers. Open the building, close the building?
Well, what we probably can do is probably talk with Mr. David, so she can, she work out, you know, some hours. She also has a benefit. There's benefits over there working, maybe they can rotate their hours to be available for the eighth and ninth, for the fifth.
I would hope, I would hope that she will bring to you the plans for that because we want this to be successful. We don't want to wait till the last minute. So have a conversation with her, have her bring a plan of action to use the share of this council. Thank you, sir. Councilman Thompson?
As a member of Black Belt Benefit Group, I would be there, so I might even build a closed building myself, I'll do that. We gotta get the good folks over there that helped us out in the previous cleanups at the Lions Club uses and do it independently of the city, then I think we can do that as well as an organization. So I hope we can make this work. Joan Baez is a huge boon to this community, she's gonna bring attention and positive energy to this community. And as we all know, we desperately need something positive from our summit out right now because all we got is that. So I hope we can make this work and I applaud y'all, we're getting him here, her here, and hopefully this will all go off without any issue.
I think we're, I think we're gonna be okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Any other questions? All right. Ten, fifteen, twenty tickets?
They range from thirty to one fifty, but there's only four tickets left.
Those are thirty-dollar tickets?
Uh, there's, there's two one fifties, one one twenty-five, and one ninety-dollar ticket, I think that.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. To the mayor's report, Mr. Thompson?
Good afternoon. You all should have a resolution on your test. We're trying to enter into a partnership with the Dallas County Commission regarding an RTP ADECA agreement. And you have, I have the two engineers here that are helping us put together this project and they can probably explain it a lot better than I can.
I like the first thing, see? Yeah, this project will be at no cost to the city of Selma, so by all means, please proceed. Sorry, don't bump the gun there, Mr. President. That was good news right there, at no cost to the city of Selma.
That's always good news, right?
Amen, brother, amen.
This is a project that's administered through a ADECA recreational trails program. It's typically an eighty, twenty grant and match. And that can be done in kind labor, donations, or cash match. The Black Belt Benefit Group has agreed to match any funding necessary for the project once costing zero by the city of Selma. The purpose for the partnership with Dallas County Commission is that Selma currently has an LWCF grant open through the same program. And with one open, you can't apply for another. So the Dallas County Commission has agreed to be the conduit for the grant application. The trails will be almost on, within the city limits of the city of Selma. They'll connect Battlefield Park to the Riverfront Park and also connect the northern part of the city of, running In Shape Fitness down through Old Town, back into, back into the same area. Get the maps in front of you. Those are general maps for location right now. Everything with the, with the, with the exception of one piece of the trail on In Shape Fitness property is on the city of Selma property or on city of Selma right there. So in order for the Dallas County Commission to proceed with the application process, the resolution would have to be signed by the city of Selma, authorized them to do so. Like I said, it's no cost to the city, no cost to the county commission. And it would be a great quality of life for the city. Diverse use trails, walking trails slash bike trail, anything non-motivated.
What would you say to the folks that may come out and say, "Well, this is gonna provide access for criminals to get in and behind places and into businesses and residential areas"? Is there, looking at the map, obviously it looks like most of this was within green space and the stuff that does intermingle with the city actually is on given streets that are already there. But what would you say to that as far as your plan goes? Who would do it?
Well, there's, there's always, there's always that risk. Most of the places where it is a green space, it's not in heavily wooded green space. The areas that are in the southern part around the arena, around Eagle Park, those are, those are pretty much open spaces.
Right, non-residential.
Non-residential. Everywhere you see within the occupants, every street, those are right there. On paper. What that will be is probably just signage and scrapping.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any miles in this?
Is it approximately six miles? Approximately six miles of diversity trails.
Very nice. Councilman Thompson?
And I love this, I love this, he comes with all the kids. Right, and it's wonderful. We need the bike trail. We're missing this, this is a good thing, you know, this stuff that's broken. Door for us to add some parts we have, you know, we have five months now and five months. So that's really good addition.
I hope this is the beginning of what could be just an extensive trail that goes through all of ours in Selma. There's so much to see, so much area to utilize. Hopefully something that will continue.
As stated before, I think this enhances the quality of life and also the exercise that oftentimes that we need. I'm, I'm, I'm just hoping to move forward. If the word, if there are objectives, it's good, I'll put it on the sun jumper and we can move forward with it.
Councilman Short? Yeah, you know, back, I'm looking back at the, the circumference of the park itself is going down in three geographical areas. You got Civil War, the Civil Rights Trail, approximately two point fifty-five miles. You had the old St. Louis Trail, I'm putting in two point two twenty-five miles. You got the Kilgore's Trail, one point seventy-five. Is there any way that this project can be done without all three of these geographic areas? I mean, one without the other would not be suffice?
Are you saying that it, can it be one or two, or it can be done that way?
But we don't wanna do that, we don't want to get old.
I'd like to get all three, but yeah, absolutely. It's gonna be, it is, if it's fortunate enough to be funded, it'll be bid as alternates. So one, two, and three, as far as the money goes, as far as we'll do, but our estimates usually pretty, are pretty, pretty tight. And I feel like we can get all three with the money this proposed.
It's just a competitive brand, I don't see it as a...
It is a competitive brand. Yes, other cities, other cities will be able to apply. The deadline to apply is December twenty-first of this year. So we've got about a month, month and a half to get this, to get this done. It's a pretty lengthy application. The max you could apply for is four hundred thousand dollars. Typically, when you apply for that much, they won't, they won't fund it because it's only two and a half million dollars applied and they won't spread it as far as they can. So I've chosen the two fifty range, two seventy, as a place to land. Gives you the best bang for your buck and the best chance of getting funded.
You already got the council's approval. You already got the council's approval, the county, this is a jump pitch with the county.
We met with the, with the, with the county just last week. They're willing to move forward with this, with the, with the, with the resolution from the city council first.
Okay.
If the city's okay with it, then we'll approach the council in twenty-six and their commission meeting will get that by hand. But we've met with some individuals from the county and they're, they'd like to see this first.
Also, to the county's own, the county's assistance only being one this month, that was due on the twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir.
Let's go put this on, I see. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else for Thompson?
Sure. About six months ago, we were commissioned, our company, Civil South East was commissioned to do a study on the drainage issues on Bear Road. And that study has shown where the deficiencies were, where the problems are, where the erosion has caused serious problems over the years. Now, kind of bowl issue between major Christmas school, foster assisted living, and it just takes up a lot of houses on Bear Road that struggle with flooding. We put together an analysis on that, an estimate to what it would take to, to put it all together, to repair. And I'll, I can pass these around to you guys, we've got some copies. What we'd like to do is, it's about three hundred and forty thousand dollar worth of improvements that need to be made. And the way we do this is through the State Revolving Fund Program at ADAM. The first step is a pre-application that's due at the end of the year. The pre-application is simply just a presentation of the problem and the presentation of an estimate and a map. Then they'll decide whether or not they're willing to award funding for it. At which time, they'll tell you whether or not they can give you any kind of grant for it all. Typically, what they do in these stormwater projects like this is they award fifty percent of an ingrant and fifty percent in a twenty-year low-interest loan to make it feasible for, feasible for a city to pay back because there's no way to recover money on stormwater projects. You don't have stormwater bills like you have water and sewer. So the ADAMSRF program is usually pretty good about providing grant dollars for projects like this. But what we do with the, with the pre-application, it doesn't have to, do by the end of the year, doesn't cost you anything. It's just exploratory to see if they'll provide funding.
So was you asking, will we both move forward with the feasibility of that?
Well, the, the application, the pre-application is a three-page application and it doesn't, it really doesn't require...
Doesn't take a vote or anything?
Doesn't take a vote or anything. Doesn't, doesn't require a vote. I just wanted to make you aware.
Okay.
Because if it is funded, if they do say, "We'll give you money for this", then we go to full application, which will require a council resolution.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else for Thompson?
That's it.
That's it? Go ahead. I didn't attend the presentation with the core engineer with the project of, of the flood. I did get a chance to see a televised news report. Obviously, it was a well, well presented to the public and I don't understand, can't perceive why this comeback such a long time of even approving that resource. I just want to thank you for the perseverance and I think you're gonna do it on our side.
Thank you. It was a great report.
I just wanted to let Mr. Short, Councilman Short, rock up. I had the opportunity to go last day into the presentation and there are some remarkable possibilities that can come out of that. Some remarkable resources that the corps will, will be able to offer us as a result. And also, I learned that I think that Mr. Barrett and his, his organization may be interested in knowing some of the plans that we also have can be added to that so that we really will get a bigger bang for our buck, you know, and broaden our capacity to be able to, to really maximize our ability to provide better quality of life things. Particularly with the riverfront development. So if we take, you know, some, some ADECA money that we'll be able to get for projects and then some of the things they're looking at doing. We, there are, and some of the things that we've got that we're in the planning stages that we've talked about, there, there are really some things that are gonna happen in the next couple of years, so it's looking good.
Thank you all. Yeah, it was a great presentation. They had about nine different exhibits that they showed, which is gonna go a long way in our future planning of our river. And they basically looked at it from a hundred-year study to a five-hundred-year study, which under both of them, they're gonna give us assessments of both diagrams and come up with a plan to figure out how to, basically it's giving us preventative measures as well as future plans on our end that we may utilize to develop our river as well. So it's definitely a great opportunity.
Right. Thank you. Be impressed here, make sure you assist them, at least councilman, raise your hands for you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I know I came late, but, uh, Councilman, we mentioned the possibility, you might have a request to be put on the agenda.
Okay. So, thank you, Carol.
Well, I'd say what it was, I put an injunction on my ass when I was employees at the Rito and Ms. Wade and I was the phone, the finance office. And so a few employees in finance department had a finance meeting that they had shown in our meeting. It's all lax updates, you know, don't get it, whatever. And then pulling the mail, a credit card, see the credit card from there. And then, and then, and I would see anything about our, well, our employees being laid off, that's why.
Employing big business.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yeah. But I hope the agents could, if we don't have it, I can't talk about it too. And I think it's too important that they said, okay, we're gonna put it off for a whole no week, another two weeks or whatever. Because this was an important issue and I think that the council needs to address.
Councilman?
And I'll do the report. And I, I want to know, are you on the, are you on the count, on the bank account, see what they have in the bank?
Councilman?
Yes, I want to ask you a question. I, you haven't been in while, I'm doing a follow-up. It's on, you know, the Brownfield, the grant that, the research. I, I keep it up with the months and you haven't given me a report about the saw?
They, they have done the testing. They still are creating the books for each of the properties in the areas that were listed. And the junkyard is one of them. But what I will have for you all on Tuesday, I will give you a form that they gave me, basically, it's a form that's telling them, telling you what percentage has been complete of each area that has been looked at under the Brownsville. But I do have that. But it's not complete yet. So it will tell you what percentage is complete on that one, but it doesn't give a timeline for when it is gonna be fit, complete, finished ultimately. Ultimately, it's a three-year, it's normally a three-year grant, see? So it begins on the first year and it goes and it completes after three years. Some are finished a lot quicker than others because of, for various reasons, but that's ultimately what they have. But they didn't give me a, a finished date for any of them, but they did give me an update to where each of the projects that were included in that Brownsville area are. And I'll make sure you all have copies on Tuesday.
Okay, because it, to me, it is very important to me in my area because I have given the process of trying to clean that, that, that area up because it is, it needs, we need to get it cleaned.
Well, it, it will definitely, it has been under consideration and it has a lot of areas, well, all the areas that are potentially been listed under that Brownsville. Basically, they go under the assessment, which is what goes on now. And then an application is done for cleanup of the area. If they choose it to clean it up, then what will happen is they will give us an additional grant to actually clean the area up. And once it's cleaned up, then you can develop it. You can pretty much put whatever it is or, under other instances, it's good for bringing in other businesses and things because they're coming into an area that is already, you've done a lot of legwork for that company or business or park or whatever it is that you may want to utilize those areas for.
My main concern is because of the principal at our school. You know, he has a school in that area. And it's very important to me that I, I promised them that I was gonna do all to get that area cleaned up because of the children and the people that lives in that community.
Okay. Well, I think that report that I have will definitely give them a, it will definitely let them know that they're not just holding their hands and that it's steadily progressing. And once that report is ready though, they will tell you if the area is eligible for cleanup because that's kind of the way that it goes. They do the assessment and then they tell you whether or not it's eligible. And if it is eligible, then they will submit the application.
All right, thank you.
You know, I know that it was something else I wanted to ask Mr. Thompson. Could you check with Mr. Ray Hogs, our city engineer, to find out when, back there on the normal sewage line projects that are undertaken on board, which require a little test. So they have sets, put the line down, but then they, they run along. So when will this project be finished and when will they come back and repay those streets? Because it's a mess. And, and, and my constituents is almost beating my door down wanting to know when they're gonna come back and fix these streets because it's taking a toll on their cars and knocking the front end of our lines and in some cases, some actions that have been broken. I don't think Mr. Hogs will be in the sewage line, probably.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna try to, gonna try to get him to give me a report. I don't know if you all want to try to come on Tuesday, but what I'll do, I'll get him to give me a report to kind of give you an update on where they are and then a potential completion date.
I know, I know, I know, I don't need Mr. Hogs, I'm up here, I don't want time.
Yeah, and I know a reporter sometimes kind of can give you a...
Just find out when the project is making be finished and how soon can we expect the contract because their responsibility is to come back and repay these streets.
That's right. Okay, and I'll make sure we have some information on that for you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And we're gonna move very quickly, it's not gonna take me very long, here's my report. Sometimes, Mr. Thompson, I see. The first item that you have before you is the lead bait in phase one. That's registered to one-one-zero dash eighteen slash nineteen, declaring public nuisance and immediate evadement of certain properties that's listed within the provision. You see that the properties are located within the ward, wards three, four, five, six, and seven. Three, four, five, six, and seven. Seventh item that you have before you is reservation, one-one-one dash eighteen slash nineteen, declaring certain properties as unsafe structures. They have only three properties there. Kaiser, Lawrence, and Fifth Avenue. That's close to you. But you only have three properties that we're declaring these properties as, in the lack of state and asking the owner to correct these matters within forty-five days. And if they fail to, need to be demolished and or renovated, uh, the structure, then the city will come and take steps to demolish the structures. Next item that you have before you is the transportation enhancement project. This is an agreement that comes to the city council every year with partnership, if you call it a county, as it relates to taking care of the maintenance from the bridge all the way up to the field. I think we've been doing this for about ten, ten, twelve years, probably. But you have the agreement before you from the Dallas County Commission, questioning if that's approved. We pay, we pay a... This is, uh, an agreement that comes to the city council every year with partnership, if you recall, with county, as it relates to, uh, uh, taking care of the maintenance, uh, from the bridge all the way up to the field. Uh, I think we've been doing this for about ten, ten, twelve years, probably. But you have the agreement before you, uh, from the Dallas County Commission, questioning, I don't know, saying, you approve. We pay, we pay a, uh, seven-five hundred dollars, not a lot.
Well, it, before it was in my special price, that's why.
It was on the, uh. The reasons are where, I mean, can you pay for it without a special price?
Well, uh, it may, it may, I don't, right now, based on, I'll look at the numbers, I'll let you all know.
Better know for us to Tuesday.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, City Council.
How does it do the, like, property, property, do it, uh?
Oh, uh, one hundred percent for it. Uh, 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 yeah, one hundred percent for it, you know, that's the maintenance of it. Uh, and, uh, that's quarters coming into the city of Selma, so we must keep them in the areas clean. It initially, if you recall, was a grant that started us off with, uh, from the, uh, bridge all the way up to Craig Field, we had to plant the trees and everything, uh, and once we did that, it was, uh, maintenance, uh, and upkeep, uh, was on the city of Selma and Dallas County, on the condition that we, we would keep it clean if we get the grant, so we received that grant years ago. Uh, but it's our issue to keep the area maintained. Next item that you have before you is, uh, you have a letter, and I only have, I only attached the letter from gambling gamble, and then you see the other letter from Mark Hanes. Uh, this is dealing with a project that the, uh, council have been working on.
New development.
New development, and, um, you will see that the, the letter from gambling gamble stating that, um, that some, uh, matters that can't work, where they cannot represent, they had withdrawn in this matter, but they are recommending, uh, Hogs and Hanes, which is a qualified developer within the city of Selma, uh, that does projects as, uh, we have discussed. So, they asking, and we are asking, uh, that we, uh, and you have the letter from Mark Hanes, that they are in position to represent the city of Selma in this matter, uh, in this new development. So, we will ask, uh, the city council to approve the representation just as you have done with gambling gamble.
Yeah, that, that's working with, uh, in conjunction with, uh, aforementioned partners when it came to, uh, understanding what processes could be in place to ensure the success of that ongoing project?
Yes. Next item that you have before you, City Council, alcohol beverage license A J, one stop located on Meadow Center Parkway. This is in Ward.
Two.
No, to Meadow Center Parkway, is it two?
Two.
Yeah, uh-huh, hold that ahead, Councilman, Youngblood, uh, right, right there, uh, the store right beside Lanes.
Lanes two.
Lanes two, that's correct, uh, they asking for a retail beer off premise. Asking for a, you know, the store has always been there, has always had licenses, um, and I think this is the, uh, transfer, uh.
Um.
How they current it up to date with the taxes?
Yeah, that was one, well, on the taxes, I think you're gonna check on, but on their business license and, and, uh, all of that, they did check, they are, uh, uh, currently there.
The transfer, well, the city council, for our license, see?
If you look on, uh, I was just looking at.
And it was the, I let out, I see the area of concern.
If you look, if, if you look, uh, one, two, three, on page four.
Current license, see?
Mm-hmm.
Who's got a press?
Um.
Well, let's, let, let's see, if you look right above this, there's notice of transfer.
But it says the current message is not renewed.
That's right, it's, it's not, it's not being renewed, but it be, it's, 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 it's transfer, they have a great spirit in there. I think like, uh, sixty or ninety days.
Ninety-six, ninety-eight.
Yeah, but you have the old, you can't have both of them at, at the same, same time. So, no, it is, it isn't being renewed.
And is it being transferred to?
You, you see on the right-hand side of the new, they're on page four. You can't page four.
I think it's page two.
Yes.
That's page two.
Yeah, that's what.
Oh, okay.
Page two.
Okay.
Again, that's a synthetic product.
Hello.
This is not gonna go on perfectly.
Is this your first reading?
Uh, no, if you recall, last city council, uh, city council placed on first reading during the last city council meeting. Okay, yeah, I'll check it, uh, it was placed during the last city council meeting, we placed the sign out of the newspaper.
I think this is the one Mr. Randolph was talking about, and he said, cause you know what? Mister Little Too Close for Comfort, or maybe, yeah, I think you're mistaken, only yes.
Uh, two, Meadow Center Parkway, uh, Lanes two.
Now, does this individual own any other, any other stores?
I, I'm not sure.
I mean, does the, the page two information, uh, especially the one that's related to, uh, to the S B D, is that, is that something that's, uh, I mean, again, what is being listed there is a synthetic product, and it makes me wonder if that was sold through an additional storefront somewhere?
Yeah, now, that would be something, I see it on, even though the shared hand there, please. Let's see what the police department stated in there, go back to the, uh, they went to the police department, so let's check and see. I want you, uh, get two of the, uh, for.
Um, Mr. Turner, Mr. Turner somebody, is there somebody that I can ask to do a little, little investigation in the, about some concerns that I have? Does it, I guess, have some concerns that I have?
Yes, why doesn't everybody do that?
Did I do?
You, you will see what, you have the attachment from the police department, it's the last three pages. So, you do have.
I'm gonna ask, Mr. President, is this the title of another?
But I think, in the best interest of myself, I'm not voting for it.
I would prefer it, you should press it.
Well, I think.
What would you, what would you take?
Well, I think this, this is a, uh, this store, I mean, this is, a store is a, is a busy place, and people do a lot of business there, however, it's because of that, I think there needs to be some, okay.
Well, I'm sure.
We can take it.
Okay, if we could just do that for another couple of weeks, then I, I would be a little better about layout and, um.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's all right.
Okay. Next item that you have, City Council, there's a public hearing, attached to proof. Uh, this is on seven-seven-two, uh, with the St. James Hotel, you're branded in the newspaper, you will see that notice is everybody given that on November thirteenth, which is during our council meeting at five o'clock, we have scheduled, scheduled, uh, a public hearing to discuss and vote upon taking action on the adoption of, um, a resolution authorizing approval of the city entering into an agreement, uh, for the purchase of the St. James Hotel. So, this is dealing with the St. James Hotel, we'll have a public hearing as it relates to the sale of it, um, of the St. James Hotel, and all of the conditions and everything that we discuss too, uh, the city council, uh, is in the legal publication. You have a partial one, and then you have a partial two.
Councilman, is that good?
Yes.
Uh, is anything, uh, in there about?
Yeah, give me a second, it's right after the, uh, alcohol beverage license.
Okay, does it got the thing in there about the Phoenix Park, the parking?
Yes.
Okay, I, I wanted to, to mention because that's been, we had, had, we had become so enamored to using that, uh, that park, and have enjoyed it so much, but I wanted to remind, um, I, I know that when, when we began life, the first, maybe the beginning of our second term, um, yeah, Council President, really, we, uh, had torn down the, the, uh, Phoenix Park, but, but it seemed, to the best of my recollection, and I see Miss Iggy Jones who sends up the audience, and she will probably know this more than anybody here, but it seems to me when the St. James was being renovated, that I seem to remember that the Phoenix building was procured by the city for the purpose, I remember this being talked about, for the purpose of being maybe a parking garage for the St. James.
Is that right?
Do you remember that? Okay, I, I remember that being discussed, now, so, I wasn't on the council, I was a little bit involved with a lot of the discussions with the St. James, and just a couple of comedians here and there, and of course, love the hotel, and then I remember Mayor Evans at the time talking about it, but the reason that we made a park was so that it would be an attractive stopgap until we could use it for its intended purpose, and we have used it, and we have enjoyed it, but it doesn't, and it's something that we'd like, we have, you know, we ha- do have other places that we could fix just like we have at Phoenix Park, but I, you know, I think that is very crucial in using it for its intended purpose, you know, the park of the St. James, maybe that big park. I just wanted to remind the council that that was the intended purpose for, um, procuring that property there. So, that, that certainly shouldn't be an impediment in the, um, hotel contract.
Uh, there, there's nothing in the deed, uh, any type of restrictions or anything, I don't know what the intent was. Uh, I don't recall the intent, but there's nothing in the deed, uh, that's ways to say. But the Phoenix Park is in here for the, and this is for the lease of the Phoenix Park, not the sale of it, but the lease of, uh, for them to be able to park their vehicles, uh, over there on that site. The next item that you have, and, and this hearing will be scheduled at five o'clock, City Council, uh, we also are asking you to go into executive session, um, uh, on next Tuesday also. So, we'll have a hearing first, and then it'll be left up to the council, that's related to when you wanna go into executive session. Uh, we prefer it to be sooner than later.
But down to here.
Here it'll be at five o'clock after we do the roll call and, and before the mayor's report. We would like to go into that here because it, it has, uh, been publicized for five o'clock.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday.
And this is to allow citizens to input?
Yeah, if citizens would like to speak. Maybe they'll, they'll want to come up and speak as relates to, uh, uh, the sale of the St. James Hotel, uh, and, uh, the lease of the, uh, the Phoenix Park. But all of it is in, and, and if someone would like to go back, uh, this article ran in the newspaper, October the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, it ran in the newspaper, October the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen. So, you can go back and forth that article and, uh, read it. The next item you have before you, City Council, the amic, this is probably gonna be the one last one that I'll give you thing to, your amic statement, uh, the, the, all of the amounts there of York that approved, all of them except the last three, uh, and which is in the amount of, of the eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Okay, you're looking at eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, all the rest of them have already been approved, uh, it appears that they are waiting for payment. On the previous one, so it's one hundred and seventy-one.
Is that, is that, is that in full thirty or sixty?
No, they, it, uh, uh, the current, that would be the current, and over thirty add together. If you look to the left of the claim, you see the last date is August twenty-ninth. That day, uh, secretary placed on there to state that, that's when it was approved, and the June the twenty-seventh was approved, uh, that other date on there. But you have three claims below that August the twenty-ninth, them are the three new claims that have not been presented to the city council, which would be the, uh, over thirty, uh, would be one of them, and the current, which is the ten thousand, which comes out to a total of eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars for the amic statement. Eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's what we asking for the approval in the amic. City Council, the next item that you have before you, after we have the public hearing on Tuesday, uh, any other, any other question on that stage?
We have, we have eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen, lastly.
No, we just add the current plus.
Six days, thirty days.
Over thirty days, so, so once we add both columns together, that becomes eleven thousand, over seventy-one dollars.
They did eleven thousand, eight one six, sixty-seven, that says over a hundred and twenty days. That's, uh, four times three is one twenty, that's four months. Uh, that is due, that, that would be eight, six. Not as of October the seventeenth when we receive this. In the clerk's office, you see a date on the right-hand side, October seventeenth. When we receive this on October seventeenth, you see the total amount due? Yeah. The next item that you have before you, Council.
But a four, yes. This is a page due state, including the four minutes, so you're asking us to vote on the current and over thirty, but the amount that is due is the total amount at the top?
Yes.
It's on none of this, if they hate?
Not as of October seventeen.
And we approved it in?
The date you approved was on the left side, June the twenty-seventh, you see the date? It was approved June the twenty-seventh, and then you came back and approved the other ones on August the twenty-ninth, so. Any other questions on the amic statement, City Council? The next item you have before you is ordinance one-one-eight, that's seventeen slash eighteen, after we have the public hearing on Tuesday, dealing with the sale of the St. James Hotel. Uh, then, and, and we'll have the attorneys here and everything, uh, hopefully everyone is, everyone is familiar with what we're doing, selling the St. James Hotel to the Graglin Grove and Hilton, all of that. Everyone is familiar, so this will, this is what this is about, uh, app, uh, just kinda letting the public have their input, if they have any input, and then we'll come back with ordinance one-one-eight. Ordinance one-one-weighted, ordinance one-one-eight, uh, slash dash seventeen slash eighteen. Anytime that we are selling property of the, uh, city of Selma, we must do it in ordinance form. This ordinance, if you recall, was placed on first reading, probably about a month and a half or two ago. When it first came up, it was placed on first reading, but we was holding off on it, uh, the fact that we didn't know what we were gonna do with the Phoenix Park. They were looking at other, uh, avenues, other parks, um, of, of places, uh, but that didn't pan out. So, you do have ordinance after we have the public hearing, we'll bring the ordinance back to the city council, one-one-eight. Uh, already on first reading, we will be asking for the approval of the same. Uh, the next item that you have before you would be ordinance one hundred dash. The next item that you have before you would be ordinance one hundred dash eighteen nineteen, this is the lease of the Phoenix Park, now, we placed this on first reading during our last City Council meeting, okay, this is what was discussed, came for the City Council for the Phoenix Park, if you're selling or leasing property, you have to do it via ordinance, so we did place it on first reading during our last City Council meeting, so it will be up for approval, ordinance number one zero zero dash eighteen slash nineteen. Any questions? City Council, the next item you have before you is resolution, and it was too late for me to get that resolution number, but it's resolution something, dash eighteen slash nineteen, you will have that resolution number by Tuesday. What has happened, City Council, is that there's one error that we, I did find, and you will see the public works labor two, the resolution that you approved was the, on the second page, the resolution one oh seven dash eighteen slash nineteen, you approved public works labor of seventeen thousand, five one three, the employee that is filling that position came to the office and stated he is not making that, he is making fifteen thousand and eighty, when we went back to see, but where did we get that from, on the last page, there was an error that was made, you will see that it was presented at the seventeen thousand, five one three, when we checked with HR department, that figure that he has always been making for years is the fifteen thousand and eighty, so we asking the City Council to come back and on the labor two there, it's fifteen thousand and eighty, now, I don't know where the mix-up is coming up, that's what he's making, the fifteen thousand and eighty, he has stated that he is a laborer too, and that he should be making the seventeen thousand, but all of these years, he's been making the fifteen thousand and eighty, so I don't know how they're going to straighten that out, but we can only go by what HR has him, has him at, and because, City Council, you, what you're doing is that if you hold when you approve the budget, there were some positions that you left out, I guess unintentionally or however it may be, you wanted to go back and put these positions back in the budget, and you wanted the employment and pay stats of these employees to be corrected, and that be retroactive so that they paid and employment relating back to the passage of the budget, if you recall, their name was not in the budget, so they received letters from the executive branch of government stating that they did not have no more employment with the city of Selma, and the City Council came back and put them back in the budget via this letter right here. Now, I don't know whether, I know that some of these individuals received the layoff, so, but they still, from what the resolution is saying, is that from the, from the time that they were terminated or dismissed from the city of Selma, they should have been receiving their pay up to the time that they were laid off, which would have been the November fifth, but we do want, so the intent behind the council is put them back in the position that they were in prior to, HR is saying that this individual is making fifteen thousand and eighty, and that's what the intent of the council is put him back to where he was.
I do recall, in fact, I had here, at a work session, there was a resolution that speaks to what the attorney is speaking of, and in that resolution, I got that resolution at home, it had all of these people, including Lola Sewell, however, when we came to the council meeting, this resolution had a name in it, why I don't know, but it's here on the back, there is a distinction of keep to be reinstated to a job before benefits paid retroactively, Mrs. Sewell is been consulted on, I don't see any money figured by her name, I don't understand what is going on, but I do believe this council intends to approve Mrs. Lola Sewell.
He had talked with Mr. Van Dagen about that position, and he said that he can move forward with it, I want to have the phrase, it's built, he would move forward with that position.
But I do think, Mr. President, if we're going to post on this, we need to make sure for merit, because Mrs. Lola Sewell's name is captured in what we're doing, that would be a real issue.
Yeah, and she should receive her back there too, we might have to take ASAP, where I don't know.
Wait, 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 there was some questions about that, that position, but I think we need to go ahead and move forward with it.
So can you, can you grab a memo and call, or can you see it, or check immediately?
I think the resolution will change, that would reflect her name on it, where it would be a matter of record. The intent of this council is to reinstate her as well as these other people.
Come back to me here, questions?
I said when I asked, you know, I was trying to make sure she did a check back there to the, what, the sixth? Well, all of them getting their money, right? So we instead, we're going to be paid back for any of all benefits of her to them.
Now, if they receive, if they receive their layoff, then it only would, it would stop at layoff, that wouldn't bring them back to work.
Then it was go back to, they, it was omitted from the budget.
That's right, it would go back to the date that they were terminated, I guess, and come up to the layoff.
Attorney Dunn, I had, as the council president and mayor, for a letter, and I realize the council president cannot produce this, it's just for a matter of record to him, but for a list of the laid off person, and I haven't gotten it, and I know several, the rest of the council would like that too, and do you know what we need to do in order to get that list?
Have y'all, I mean, I don't have a copy.
Exactly, and I'm sure that you don't.
You probably need to request the HR department. I don't see why they wouldn't produce the list. So they should, should be able to produce the list, put it into HR, put it to the mayor, I guess, put the mayor.
Put it to the mayor of the city.
City of HR, yeah, have y'all put a letter in yet?
Oh, I didn't.
So is it the intent of the City Council to add Sewell?
Oh, absolutely.
On this resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay, and to change the salary, this resolution is identical to the one you approved at the last City Council meeting, only changed that salary from, you see, the second resolution, second, second resolution, the second page is the one you approved, the only difference to the top resolution is the salary for the public works. And now you want to add Ms. Sewell to this new resolution that's approved for Tuesday.
Right.
Okay?
When, what happened, when we did our, when we were doing the budget here, we had, you know, we changed in the budget here, you know, when Sewell was in as, she was a code enforcer, but at the time, we had moved Sewell cake up to because they all thought she was APOC certified, but then when we went back through, we said give Ms. Sewell her, to place her where she was as a code enforcer, and they said take the other, the salary that we had gave to her, and hire an APOC certifying officer, that's the way it is specified in the budget, that's the way.
The details, I don't want to move into personnel, personnel matters, but I think we need to go ahead and put it, move it forward.
Just to prove, just for a matter of record, just to show what actually transpired in this chamber, in the, in the work session of October twenty third, there was the Senate General, which had four hours, and the four hours reached to approve resolution, R one oh seven, that's the number you moved to, Mr. President.
That's the second resolution that you have.
R one oh seven dash eighteen slash nineteen, amend, amend the twenty eighteen slash twenty nineteen budget to reflect the following positions and departments, laborer John Walker and Terry Ward Recreation Department, administrative assistant Judith Porter, Personnel Department, laborer two John Lawson, Public Works Department, secretary of Spanish thirty-nine City Clerk's Office, and court affording officer Lola Sewell, court afford officer, so her name need to be on this resolution, which was omitted from the resolution of the new budget.
Remember, the matter came up to you, City Council, and I think it was you that brought it up, but I think y'all said y'all discussed it at a later date, because there was some other issues or something, I think President Bowie, and I think y'all agreed, as long as her name, it was included, and y'all took a vote on the resolution, one was that eighteen nineteen as it is, and you were going to come back at a later date and discuss that matter there, but what we will do is we will add her name in there along, as whatever, whatever HR is saying her position was, prior to the approval of the new budget, whatever that position was, we'll put that and her salary back in there, and then she should get paid, and if that's the intent of the City Council, is to pay all of these employees from the time that they were terminated, all up until the time that they were laid off.
That is the intent.
Is that the intent of the council?
That is the intent, because it was my intent of this council to remove her from that position.
Gotcha.
How she got removed, that will be, but it is what it is, and be.
Gotcha. We'll have that amended amendment for you on Tuesday, to add, two amendments now to that resolution, one is to change the salary from seventeen down to fifteen, and then the other one is to add Lola Sewell's position in this resolution. The next item, City Council, that you have before you, film permit for cold water media, film permit for cold water media, they are, they are coming in, my plaque, in eleven fourteen, which will be on next week, from around about twelve noon until about five PM that evening. Yeah, the first one, they'll kind of be filming on the Edmund Pettus Bridge, they're not going to have any, there's no need to, any type of closure or anything, they will be on the sidewalk filming, as you see there on the L, it says on the Edmund Pettus Bridge and various public sidewalks and parks, they'll have a video camera, they may have, it states around about six people here, one or two people.
Tuesday?
Uh, no, on Wednesday, fourteen is Wednesday, thirteen is Tuesday, Council meeting.
Okay.
The filming is going to be on Wednesday on this cold water, but again, it's only for about five hours, they'll have about six people, they'll have some crew people, maybe production manager, one or two people, they'll be filming, they have paid the fees and everything to the city clerk, she has, she's stated that they overnighted it, and so it is, and you will see the receipt, and they're asking for the approval of the film permit for Wednesday. The next one you have before you, City Council, is this is the one, I think you're talking, this is the one that you're representing, President Bowie, this is Brighter Moon LLC, and they will be filming on the thirteen, I guess that'll be Tuesday, from sunrise to sunset, and from speaking to the Ms. Harrison. They're going to overnight them? Yeah, they don't, that's right, they don't, they, they will pay it today, but I don't think we received the credit card or whatever she said, they're going to pay a credit card, so they're going to overnight it, and that's not their fault, that's just on behalf of the city, so.
This is going to be Tuesday, and we're close on Monday, I just thought about that. What other way can we go ahead and move forward?
Well, you know, if, if you, if them, they pay the fee, you know, you could ratify.
So we can't ratify the firm once they get the fee, what can we do with Tuesday now?
It'll be, if they are filming on the thirteen, I don't know whether or not anything will happen or not, but if they are filming on that day, then probably going to come back. Ratify the firm. Ratify the firm, approve the film permit. One of the things that we try to get out, because really, I hope they're getting better, because we have received these things within a week or two, and really, we need time to present to the City Council, if there are road closures, the street closures, they have to go to the police department, police department have to come up with an estimate of how much it's going to cost to close a street, the officers cost and everything, but most of these right here, since we have, have put the film permit in place, these are just people that are, they're film crew, but it shouldn't cause any, these two should not cause any type of interruption as relates to the traffic flow, the second one that we're looking at, they're going to go in the cemetery, they're going to do a little bit of filming in the cemetery, they're going to go to the park, and then they'll walk across the bridge also, we have people filming every day, they go across the bridge, taking pictures, but that's for the personal use, when people are coming in here, and they are some type of business, so they have to, they have to go through the permit and City Council approval, but you have both of these film permits that will be happening next week.
We're moving forward with this, ratifying the firm, pending that we receive the two fifty on tomorrow, I spoke to the guy today, and he said he's going to overnight their amount, so hopefully we will receive it tomorrow.
Yes, and the, we do, you recall City Council, Mr. Thomas stated that he was going to fish fry, y'all recall that, but, so he is ready to do that fish fry, he is ready to please the City Council, so we're going to do that on Tuesday. Tuesday night after the City Council meeting.
I thought we might need it Tuesday.
Y'all recall the last one that he did?
Yes.
Yeah, it was very nice, very nice, he would like to do it at the convention center, so we're going to see can we just have one or two tables like y'all sat down last time, so that he would be able to bring his fish in, y'all can get it off the table, as much as we can, I guess.
We don't need it Tuesday night, Charlie.
Never mind, us to feed this is for.
This is for the City Council.
Members of the City Council.
And their family members, so I know we have Jane S. Five, and y'all can give me the numbers tonight, but I will need the numbers, whether or not it's fifty or a hundred people, whatever, he's willing to feed the City Council, and if one is wondering whether or not it's ethical, it is ethical, we did check with the Evans Commission, and the Evans Commission said it's okay for him to fix fish and feed City Council and the family members, so we already have that approved. The last thing that you have on the council's agenda is that I really do, there is an The last thing that you have on the council's agenda is that I really do uh that there is an urgency that the City Council uh go ahead and proceed and or the mayor. However, as it relates to uh replacing myself as City Attorney. This meeting here may be my last one, I may have one more meeting. I will try to shoot for trying to have one more meeting. Uh but if not, this one may be, you know, the holidays, they're they're coming up and everything. But it's of urgency that we must go ahead and proceed with finding a City Attorney for the City itself, even if it is on a temporary basis or you bring somebody in on retainer. Uh a retainer can be month to month, that don't mean that they will be appointed. The the mayor wants the City Attorney. Uh but if you bring someone on retainer or contract in the City Council, you are the ones that will hire that attorney or that firm, okay? But it is of urgency that we go ahead and proceed uh with uh because we know that deadline, I take office January fifteenth, okay? The holidays coming up and I I've gotta take some vacation time, gotta get that out of here. But we have got to uh move hastily, quickly on trying to find a City Attorney.
That's gonna be part of the session to talk about tonight along with some of your arguments that you've started.
I need some clarity.
Yes, sir.
With the uh taking up the appointment powers from the mayor who is giving police chief, fire chief, tax collector attorney. And assistant mayor has sued us. Do that put a hold on us moving forward for employing a lawyer?
That's part of the executive session. Yeah, well, um if you now 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 what you have done, you you did not include the City Attorney in that ordinance. It was only the police chief, fire chief, and tax collector. Them are the only three that you included in there. So the mayor still has the appointment powers of the City Attorney. Now, you although tha- that ordinance only transfers the power to appoint them three individuals of them three positions. Now, the City Council, you have not moved, you have to come back and move with a resolution. Uh you have just transferred the appointment powers from the mayor to the City Council. At any point in time you desire to move on appointing a police chief, fire chief, oil tax collector, then you can do that. Although a lawsuit has been filed against the City itself. Uh but uh uh no one, the the top judge that has of today has enjoined uh the City Council from moving forward as it relates to the.
With with that understanding then, we need the mayor to tell us where he's gonna go with legal since he still has appointment power of his department.
Uh totally the attorney?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How 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 he's gonna proceed after you? He need to let us know how he's gonna how he's gonna figure this out.
Any other questions from the City Council?
Yes.
There no questions?
No, yes, yes. I know you you ready to go, I know you ready. But I must, um with, I have a problem with this uh with your you know, I'm coming. Um I have a problem with, you got something here that I I wanna make clarify about this.
Yes, sir.
With uh the fifteen twenty four Causer Street. Is this the same community empowered and transfer CD tar? Is this the same property that we voted on, the city took?
Yeah, that's the property.
Yes. That's. That's property did.
Habitat Habitat they they gave the property to Habitat.
Well, no, uh is this communities empowered insurance form and CD tar?
It's an address, that's on on Causer. Fifteen twenty four.
But you see who the you you see who the owner is to the right. That's what's pulling up a a code enforcement. They look and do research at the courthouse and that's the name that is pulling up as the owner of fifteen twenty four Causer Street.
But.
Do you see the name to the right?
I I see that.
That's the third on front on the front page here.
You know, we did a memo, we did this uh with this property. Ms. Tar, the the daughter.
Y'all don't have to. Habitat.
Oh, 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 yes, yes, yes. I don't think Habitat wanted that house. And we do get, oh yeah, that's, oh Jesus, that's a long time. Yeah, I I I I talked to her. Uh but that's when you, yeah, I I I did talk to her, went I went out to the house.
Mm-hmm, that's what I knew.
Yeah, uh and she uh I think that's one of the houses that Habitat did not want. She was staying in the.
She gave it to, she.
She was she was gonna give, she she wanted to offer it to the city.
Yes.
But when we looked at, we 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 went and I think we s- well, she gonna give it as gifts or she wanted to sell it?
No, she wanted to give it.
To give it. And it was, I I think it's sitting on Causer, but it's between.
How it's 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 on Causer Street.
Yeah, but it's it's a house, it's some house, it's a very small lot. Uh and we looked at all the properties around there and we don't own any of the properties, you know. This would just create another maintenance for on behalf of the City itself. So Ha- Habitat was contacted for my, if if I can recollect. That was the piece of property that I think Habitat said that they were not interested. And we can contact Habitat again.
But so it's still her property?
Yes, the the name, you see Tar on there?
Yes, but she's not in it, so that's really why I asked.
Yeah, look like she's in Mary's now.
No, she's dead.
Oh, she's bad?
That's that's not that's that's somebody else who bought that house.
Oh, that's. It says communities empowered.
Yeah, that's that's not that's not uh Ms. Tar, that's somebody else.
Okay, so someone, I mean, somebody else may have the house now.
Yeah, somebody went down and bought bought it for fifty cent.
And Mr. Joseph, uh I think you have uh Mr. Joseph Strong Jr. Uh the family of that in Missouri, Texas. Uh that property has been taken care of now. They have came down and several of these properties on here that came in uh taking care of, so I just want.
You you you're saying one twenty eight, only one twenty eight, Mel?
Yes.
You you would like that to come off?
Yes, I have a couple of board that need to come off, cut the 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 homeowners. They've came into the neighborhood and uh they hired someone to come in to clean up the property.
Okay.
Right Miss Ethel, Miss uh Ethel Evans, she lives, she's uh she lives over there. She has uh taken care of her property too.
That's one twenty nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll take one twenty eight and one twenty nine off. Any other questions from the City Council?
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
You be quiet tonight, you miss. Run as quickly.
That's what the mayor says when I ask to be excused before run.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh this is uh she got some random, I just put all the other papers I talked about up on the floor. It's better fixed, I didn't want to stir it all up.
Yeah, uh Mr. President, uh I wanna bring to the council attention the employees, the six day employees that have been laid off. I would like for us to continue to pay the health insurance. And uh it is uh uh I always said nineteen nineteen thousand dollars for the continuing to pay the health insurance. How much? Nineteen thousand?
For all six days?
Yeah.
That's not that's much.
That's 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 not much, it's a month. I think so. I gotta be here because it's only uh I think they pay also pay like seventy seven uh seventy seven dollars uh uh seventy seven dollars a month. And so so I figured nineteen thousand dollars probably a year.
Because that's seventy dollars is probably employee purchase, you give every employer portion.
Yeah.
So it's nineteen thousand.
Yeah, so so it's probably nineteen thousand, probably nineteen thousand. I I should show good faith with our employees since uh we know this is a bogus layoff anyway. We need to take care of them, you know, I I you know, I heard my feelings see people had to go to the Bosco Center and I'm not knocking Bosco, uh follow Saint Anthony because they do does a great job. Uh I think we need to take care of our employees, you know, pay that nineteen thousand dollars a month uh you know, till they come back to work. I I know everybody, you know, some people might say we're hurting financially, but uh I don't think we're hurting financially because nobody can know how many money we got. You know, we just know about what somebody write a paper and give to us and we go from there. But nobody can really understand uh the hardship we putting on these people, our employees, you know. I hope that uh that the council will 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 allow this nineteen thousand dollars a month, you know. If if the council go against it, I hope, you know, I'd be disappointed, but I ain't, I'm not gonna cut up. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna keep playing the floor, uh George, if I'm here, I'm gonna be all six days being there. So I'm I'm gonna bring that up and then you know, so.
I mean, it's nineteen thousand, what did you get this for? But that might be.
Be- because.
That might be a bogus number too.
It's not a bogus number because uh I talked to some of the employees, they told me I couldn't just make it. And so um then I talked to a couple of employees that had family concerns. And so I just like kinda like put my numbers together. But uh maybe uh to get a real true picture and true number, I would have it.
Okay.
Maybe you could talk to Miss Pauline and get a extra one hundred percent possible. But I'm I'm close to the ballpark now, I'm good amount. Also, that'd be nineteen thousand.
Okay.
And uh, yeah.
I thought you got your information somewhere else, that's why I asked.
No, no, uh and also um even though the employees have been laid off, I I think um if you lay somebody off, they should be entitled to their vacation days. I I'm telling you, you laying anybody off, they entitled, you can't let nobody off say, oh by the way, you can't get your vacation day. That is crazy. So we should allow all anybody who wanna take their vacation days. Cause it's the it's the days that they earn, you know. How can we lay somebody off and then you tell them they can't get? You might just tell them, okay, you can't get your sick day, but you can't tell them, man, you can't get your vacation day.
That's a labor, that's a labor.
That's a labor issue. And 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 so the labor relationship, they come back and sell again. So cause cause I know uh we got a policy saying uh if if you get fired or whatever, you gonna have, I wanna say eight hours, you can only get eight hours. But we got some millions of public workers that make them away. It's 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 beneficial for them to just work all year round because they can get a little overtime. And 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 so, you see what I'm saying, so.
Do you know how much the total amount of vacation money is due for all of you?
I don't I don't I don't know, but take true, I don't care what it gonna cost, you know, cause we got money. We got money, I it don't, I I I hope y'all I'm trying to be I'm trying to be honest, but I want y'all to to try to play with these employees when it comes to Fridays, cause we got money. Pay these people if they wanna take, some of these guys got three hundred some hours. Let them get their money, it's it's their money that they earned, you know. But if I know what I was gonna get laid off, uh I'll stay at home all day, we can buy my sick days on it, you know. But you have these loyal people, look at them, should've get laid off, they came to work. So let them be entitled to they take their vacation.
But I I know if it's a violation with the labor laws, we might pay more than that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And then another thing, I looked at uh I think the mayor I don't know who who gave him information about finance, but it gave him a bad a bad number because uh I looked at, look at the budget on unemployed, we got like two hundred some thousand dollars in that line. All these people laid off, we gonna we gonna go over that two hundred thousand? You see what I'm saying? So they don't they don't make no sense. Whoever he given the information from, that he needed to get a refund from them from them because it's not right, you know. And because uh I'm I'm telling you, the line is two hundred thousand dollars for unemployed. We gonna ease it, that ease gonna be wiped out. What we gonna do then? We gonna go to the states and hey state, we don't have any more money to pay. And that labor relationship will come in, you know. And then we have a labor relationship for a year to end. So two things, let them get their vacation days and 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 pay them their pay pay for their insurance while they out. The rest of them, they talking to executive session.
Thank you.
Casper Randolph, do you know how much the unemployed benefits would be for us per month? I need you to figure out the nineteen thousand per month, I wonder how much.
I I I don't know what the unemployed uh.
Do you think you can do that for four days?
Yeah, I I I just call unemployed, I'm saying if you have a certain employee, how much you think?
No, it's.
I think it also helps if we had that lift that they all.
Yeah.
Yes, that uh the Senator requested, requested.
But I was just talking about what's in our line, like the budget.
Before you brought the no vacation, raise my hand because what I wanted to know after you stated about the nineteen thousand or approximately nineteen thousand, how much are we gonna be paying each month in unemployed benefits? Because that's affecting.
Yeah. That's part of it. That's part of it.
Counselor, when I hear you and I agree one hundred percent and you keep saying we got money. I wanna know what you basing your facts on, the fact that we got money. If you was here listening to what this all is saying, we're in financial uh distress. Our cash flow is is almost nothing. Uh we expecting money to come in and hopefully it gonna come in. And 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 people gotta understand, just because you got a million dollars on paper, that don't mean you got anything. I can't understand why people can't comprehend this. When you talk about twenty eighteen nineteen budget, that's just on paper. So Mr. Randolph, if you could provide to me the fact that we got money, then I'm on board with you. Prove to me we got.
I know.
I just can't take any word that we got money, you know, the finance department tells us we don't.
I I would just like to say, we've sent emails back and forth to the to the mayor, to the finance department, to everyone that has an email address in the city itself requesting this information. We can't provide you with data that we can't receive. We would like to look at the number to just to know how stressed, distressed, how strained we are. But we haven't been provided anything and we're the body that's supposed to know this information and we can't give it to the citizens, employees, and all them. And so um how I hear for him, if you would ask the mayor to provide the information that I know I've emailed him on several occasions and provided. I don't know how many other members have, but he has not even replied to any. I didn't receive the email that he sent everyone to thirteen. but he has not even replied to me, my, he received the email that he sent everyone, the thirteen hundred and forty some pages, the twelve hundred, uh, additional pages in, and, um, in about seven documents, so, and I am going through that diligently, and I will be working on that, and that's why I've been so quiet tonight, because I'm running all those through, through my head, because we, though there are some serious situations, we don't know exactly where we are, because we have a mayor that impedes our progress in knowing where we are financially, because he would receive all that, rarely transparency. He said he would provide this information standing there, and I'm just livid that we can't get it. We're going into another meeting approximately three weeks after the last meeting, and I know I requested the information, I'm not sure about anyone else, I know I had a meeting with him, asking for documentation, and he has not provided, so if you could do that, that would greatly help us and put us in a better position, where we can make these hard decisions that you stated that we need to make, and have stated that we need to make, but we can't make any decisions without them.
One final question. I did not attend the wrap-up session with our auditors. I made it clear that when I hear from the auditors, I want the public to be present, so they can hear the same thing I hear.
Two.
But what I heard, for those who did attend that meeting, our auditors is telling us we're in financial distress. So, where's the money, show them the money, I'm on board with this.
I, I, I didn't hear all this, uh.
You didn't say that, he said.
I, the auditor said, I think, he saw the sales tax, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Well, we know, following behind our business.
Yeah, he said all the sales taxes.
Our business is over, that's when I was young, I.
But you got Amazon taxes.
I still say franchise fees. I still say we need somebody to prove to us.
And, I, I promise you, I promise you, if I get five votes, we approve it. If I get five votes, we approve it. If we get five votes.
I get it too, we got five votes. Okay. We gonna. Where is this gonna take place?
Two, nine?
We got my vote, I want, I want to win money.
All right. We'll find out, a true picture out of finances. There won't be no hocus pocus.
Yeah, be really, really.
Councilwoman Thomas, send the votes.
Okay. I'm back, um, I requested for some information.
Hold on, hold on, Councilman.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to the base?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, you know, I, I, I've been thinking about the cell phone situation, and, uh, and I think, I've been kinda quiet, you know, but, uh, I think, uh, we need to cut off all cell phones outside of the safety. I'm, I'm telling you, if we in a bind, I don't understand why the mayor got a phone, uh, different people got a phone, this person got a phone. We need to cut off all cell phones, cell, of the safety. I, I'm telling you, if, if you wanna be true, true trying to save money, just cut off all cell phones. Don't just cut off, cut off, uh, council people's phone, 'cause I, I didn't understand that, it seem like you're trying to keep a phone, keep our construct from reaching up, but all of got our own personal phones anyway, so, everybody got their personal phone, I mean, right? So, 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 like I said, everybody got one, so we need to, you know, uh, money to vote to cut all cell phones off the side, uh, of public, public safety. Okay? I hope y'all agree with me on this, since, you know, everybody can call their cell phone.
Over this, but somehow, I don't understand how Van Dyker, Sean Van Dyker play a part in this. This man has wore too many hats, and I think it's time that, uh, with this situation, he should not be the one to, uh, I think I see the clerk, and Mrs., uh, Terry Davis should be the one pushing this issue about getting this building, the estimate, not him. He's, he's from HR now, I know he, you know, he's been from every department, now he's in HR, and now, the mayor told me that Van Dyker would be the one that is getting estimate for this building to get repaired, and it's like you dragging it, like you don't want, um, this building back up. And it's a, it's a city building, this belongs to the city, and this building has, it has its purpose like any other, uh, right, historic building. So, I'm asking, I asked for some information from our, I'm not gonna call the chief of staff, I'm gonna call the secretary. I put in for some, a request for some information on this, with this to move forward, because no one knows if the, the, uh, the insurance has paid this off, uh, we're council, we don't know, the clerk don't know, Ms., uh, Terry Davis, she don't know, but somehow, I think that the check is, really, this too long, and I think they need to go ahead and, uh, I recommend Ms. Terry Davis do her job, she's over that building, or deal with the buildings, and, uh, they need to go ahead and, uh, if they have the check, go ahead and get this, this room did, but I am going to go to the building to see how, and I'm asking the president to find out more, we need to find out more information about this, so we can get this taken care of, this has dragged too long.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
No, I'm talking to you next time.
Oh, okay, the city public building, I'm, I'm very concerned about it, I would like for you to ask, um, because I'm not getting the information that I'm asking, I asked to, run the secretary to give me.
What's the secretary?
The mayor's secretary. I asked, uh, to give me information on, uh, you know, we have, uh, for a building repair, and for the last, uh, this year, last year, I would like to see how the funders had been, had spent a building repair. I would like to see this, I would like to see how you spent eighty nine, I think it was eighty seven thousand dollars.
It's in the third document, the second page, um, it's probably, it's ours from page twenty one of thirteen, one thousand three hundred and forty five.
But basically, I couldn't get the document, because I, I have, they don't have my, uh, personal, I, I don't have it. Well, we need to know, because, uh, some of the buildings have been, I wanna know what maintenance has been prepared, there's a lot of maintenance that has been done. Well, I will be checking the lease. Yeah, but I'm just saying, I will be checking the lease.
Talking about the federal department, all of a sudden, those are getting worked on, and the laws don't sit down there for three weeks, it's what, three hundred dollars a day?
Well, well.
You gotta give me start, please, dear God, give me a start, and that department and that wasted, the time that goes on to the city while we let the buildings fall down, because people don't get a job, and they're based on sick and tired of it, I mean, it's ridiculous. There already plenty for us the first place, we don't synergize and make some efficiencies in the city, we are gonna go broke, whether we got money or don't have money. I'm sorry, I just want. Won't say, sorry, Sam, right?
I think that's a robot person.
That was a robot person.
And I, you know, here we are in City Hall, and it bothered me, you know, the old song saying, there's a leak in this whole building here, and when we walk in the door, people come into our City Hall, you look up, and if it's raining, you got to watch the city mill for here. And, uh, you know, it bothered me that, um, this is, if it comes to this, that, uh, when we have visitors, when people come to, they, they, they look up, you say, oh my God, what happened? But I, I don't think we should let our things get that bad, that we have, uh, our sheetrock was falling down out of ceiling, uh, we have people that rent these buildings that, you will, you will say that, the convention center, where we have plugs, when you plug in the wall, where all of these plugs around the walls broke off. We should, it's been too long for them to let our buildings go down, so I, I'm gonna be doing, uh, I'm gonna be just like, uh, investigating. I'm gonna be going to all of the city buildings, and, uh, you know, it's gonna be a while before we can start doing anything, but I wanna let the people know exactly what's shaking, what's shaking the thing.
Okay, I'm not sure a lot of times.
Council, Councilwoman, if you allow me to work with you on that, uh, what I do is, as I've been going through the thirty two hundred pages, uh, on one document, I found a lot of City Hall repairs that we've been doing, um, I mean, fifty nine hundred dollar City Hall repairs, or twenty three hundred dollar City Hall repairs. I mean, but that's just a description on paper, we don't have that in force, but what I do is, for City Hall repairs and building repairs, I go through this document, this document, and I'll make sure that I highlight everything that says it's been repaired for the last two years, and, uh, I give you an opportunity to do that, I can't bring it, I don't, I don't have that much paper or time.
Well, see, that's why I, when you presented to me, I, I would, I would like to have, so I should go, I told the mayor, I will be going to these buildings.
Also, Councilwoman, knowing your country buildings, I think it needs to be mandated that each building presents us with a maintenance plan, because that's been one of the biggest problems down there, is our maintenance plan, not anything.
Well, that's why I wanted to, you know, I wanted to do it the right way, and I told, uh, my, uh, city councilors, you know, how our money is being, being used on these buildings, because we, we, we lease these buildings, and we have, we have guests come in, and people use our buildings, and it's, it's important to, to, to all of us, this is our city, we gotta keep it up, we need to, there's some things we need to do, and I just want to, you know, more and more together with this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Short, for the gentleman, for the gentleman talking to us. That's what it is, for years, uh, and I look at the financial documents, for the last one year, this city has been receiving decreased spending. We're not, we're not able to pay our bills, we're having a quarter to the people in finance, we are stacking deals, we're not paying them. As a matter of fact, we owe one member the total of sixty thousand plus five hundred. Do you realize this, President, do you realize, Councilman, you got business, people don't want our pay, because we're not paying them, so why is this money everybody's talking about? I, I can't foresee us not paying these businesses, definitely after money, so, let's be real here, we got to understand, we're, we're in a financial crisis, and we need money, where there are ways to get that money, there are ways to get money, when you got, y'all want this, and I'm not, y'all don't wanna bear this, y'all don't want to call this. But from the document, the last scene, at the tune, we have a million dollars, these people are, have not paid us, that's what I'm gonna do. So, we had to do a better job and get it, even, to make sure that they get it every dollar of the bank, so that we can continue to keep our city afloat. Once again, I want that forty dollars to stay, I'm not a guess, you guys, I want, we have a big, we have a board, and the people that support the government. But the truth of the matter is, we need money, and we don't have it, and so, I tell you, realize that, we continue to give false hope to the employees. I can't, I don't believe a man, I don't dare your nothing, I don't believe any man, any city that would have tried to lay off six day people, some of them are false, I don't believe that.
Well, one thing, I, I do, I do encourage, we may need, uh, money, Councilwoman Short, but I'm strongly opposed to that one percent sales tax. For the last four years, we've been losing population at two to three percent, just yesterday, we lost Parker Jones, that would be going out. That's another sales tax that we would not be receiving, so, basically, what we need to do is probably just reengineer how we spend it, and cut back some of the things that we're doing, and be balance students of the city finances, uh, to move forward with this, but I'm strongly against that one percent sales tax. I'm one of the things, one of the largest cities, uh, levels of sales tax, and it's gonna be an adverse effect on the people who, you know, lease a board to pay eleven percent, so that's what I'm strongly against.
I understand what you're saying, but as I said, too, how do you have a one percent sale tax?
Not the same.